I would like to welcome everybody. This is our December 13, 2010 city council meeting. I'd like to call our meeting to order. We will start with a little special presentation by Paige Morseley, eighth grade student at our Tyroldo School. Paige?
Hello.
Come on up. Yeah. Everybody, please stand.
(singing) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you. I guess it takes a few years to sing like that. That's incredible. Eighth grader. Very proud to show off our students in San Carlos. And this is truly a show-off this evening. Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Do the pledge.
Do the pledge.
Now, we're gonna stand again.
So, can I ask everybody to stand? We'll do a pledge of allegiance to you. Great. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You gotta wait a little bit after all that. Wow. We usually don't have that on council meetings. Excellent. Say, report from closed sessions. There was no closed session. There's nothing to report. Going on, item three, changes to the order of agenda. Mr. Mulby, any changes?
No, no changes this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Item number four, public comment. Anybody who would like to speak on any items that is not on this evening's agenda is welcome to do so. I don't have any speaker cards, but anybody is welcome to speak. Council communications and announcements, agenda item five. Any announcements? Mr. Klein, may you start on that end?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Two weeks ago, we had the holiday night of lights. It was the first time I've been here. And I don't mean to jump in front of everyone, but I have to make up for what I did during my goblin walk announcement. So, we had the holiday night of lights. It was the tree lighting ceremony, which has now moved downtown. It's a partnership between the Parks and Rec Department and our chamber staff. I want to thank the chamber staff. It was a great event. Eight thousand people showed up. But I really want to thank the Parks and Rec Department and apologize for not thanking you for the goblin walk. So, this is a two-time thank you for the holiday night of lights and the goblin walk. Your dedication to the city is great. And thank you as well to the Public Works Department. It was a great event. Eight thousand people downtown for, I know it was under $10,000 that we spent as a city. So, it was a great event.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Maude, anything? Mr. Grocott? Mr. Griselli?
No, I'd just like to add, Mr. Klein also, our public safety folks also. It was an interesting, first time we had the new folks from public safety, the sheriff's department, and everything seemed to come off without a hitch, and it was great.
Thanks, Councilman. I'm gonna have to do it again next time. Thank you.
That's right. Listen, it's a catch game here.
Okay. Thank you. Item seven, this is approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routinely enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or the public would request specific items to be removed for discussion. Mr. Mulby, is there a way to get that on the screen per our last request? Oh, we were going through them now? Okay. Oh, wonderful. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of items seven A through H.
Mr. Mayor, before that's done, I did want to pull a couple items.
Oh, okay.
And I would, if these aren't necessary to go over tonight, maybe we just pull them and push them over to another evening if they're not, you know, that urgent. Item C and item G.
Which ones?
C and G.
C and G.
Okay. Okay. Any other items? Okay, can I hear a motion then on the remaining items?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of items seven A, seven B, D, E, F, and H.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Row call, please.
Councilmember Maude?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes. Okay, can I hear a motion to continue those other items until our next meeting?
I would move to continue items C and items G to the next council meeting.
Second. Have a motion, second. Row call.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Question, please, of staff. Is that gonna cause any trouble?
Yeah, I have the same question of staff as well. I'll need just a moment to consult with them.
All right. Would you do that?
Yep.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure if we have to do it, we gotta do it.
C and G.
Yeah, C and G.
Mr. Mulby?
Okay, we can continue it till next month. We'll require a change in our strategic plan, but that's the only date-sensitive.
So, you're okay?
Time, yeah. So, we're okay with it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Row call, please.
Councilmember Maude?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes. So, I'm gonna back up one. I think I skipped item six, reports to council. Mr. Mulby, any reports?
No reports this evening.
Okay. Now, we'll go to eight. Unfinished business. We have one item here. This is adoption of the new 2010 California Building Codes and Amendments, modifications, and appendices, and adds section 15.04.04, five of chapter 15, as title 24, part 2.4 of the California Residential Code with appendices, amendments, and modifications. Mr. Mulby, the staff report on this?
I don't believe there's a staff report. This is a second reading. Typically, we don't put an item that wasn't unanimously voted on on the consent calendar, which is where this would normally go. I believe Vice Mayor Maude, yeah, voted against the introduction as it wasn't green enough, if I remember correctly, so.
You hit it on the head.
Okay, are there any questions or discussion from council before we vote on this?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to, I guess I better get the right number here.
1428.
To approve or to adopt, hello, approve, adopt. It had to be an A. Adopt ordinance number 1428, ordinance of the city council of the city of San Carlos, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code by adopting 2010 additions of the California Administrative Code, California Building Code, volumes one and two, California Residential Code, California Mechanical Code, California Plumbing Code, California Energy Code, California Historical Building Code, California Fire Code. Wait, there's more. California Existing Building Code, California Green Building Standards Code, California Reference Standards Code, and the 1997 additions of the Uniform Security Code, Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, and the Uniform Housing Code.
Second, and I'll have to put that on my drawings under general notes.
Okay. Good. Yes. Vice Mayor Maude?
Just a clarification. I will be reiterating my no vote. I do want to acknowledge the hard work of Chris Valley and the entire staff putting this together. I still wanted more in terms of the green building ordinance, and so I will be voting now.
With that, we have a first and a second. Row call, please.
Councilmember Maude?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes. Moving on to item number nine, we have a public hearing on one item. This is consideration for approving a lease agreement at the property at 1245 San Carlos Avenue, APN number 050132180. This is a redevelopment agency. And just for the public knows, this is the furniture store on the second block of San Carlos Avenue on the south side. The city made a purchase of that building, and this involves a leaseback to the current owner. Mr. Suwicky, report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Chair and members of the agency board. Mark Suwicky, Economic Development and Housing Manager. Following your approval on November 22nd, the agency entered into a contract to purchase the property at 1245 San Carlos Avenue. Condition of purchase with the seller was that the agency leaseback the premises on a month-to-month basis at a lease rate of a dollar per square foot per month, with the first three months free. Under redevelopment law, the agency is required to hold a public hearing before entering into a lease, and the hearing required two weeks' notice, which is why this is on your agenda for tonight and not on the evening when we approve the purchase. The form of lease that is in your packet was negotiated with the seller, prepared by redevelopment council, and reviewed by the city attorney. The seller and prospective tenant has assigned a copy of the lease in anticipation of your authorization of the executive director to countersign for the agency. With approval of the lease, we anticipate closing on the purchase by Wednesday or Thursday of this week. Staff recommends that you open the public hearing, take public comment, close the hearing, and adopt the resolution. I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions from council? Okay, none. Public, would anybody like to speak on this item? Any questions or comments on this public hearing item? Please back.
Mr. Mayor, seeing no public input, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay. All those a favor? Aye. Close. Okay, public comment is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of resolution number 2010-dash.
181.
Resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos adopting the revised memorandum, no, sorry. That was nine?
Yeah, nine A.
Nine A.
Resolution of the city council, San Carlos Redevelopment Agency, approving the lease of real property at 1245 San Carlos Avenue, San Carlos, APN 050132180, and authorizing the executive director to execute the agreement and take other actions necessary to effectuate the lease.
Second. Okay, first and second, discussion?
Just clarification. We are now acting not as mayor and so forth, but as director and so forth.
Good point.
RDA.
Clarification, this is not a city council item. This is a redevelopment item. Good point. With that, row call, please.
Director Maude?
Yes.
Director Griselli?
Yes.
Director Grocott?
Yes.
Director Klein?
Yes.
Chair Royce?
Yes. Item 10 of 12 items, we're moving. New business. This is consideration, a resolution to adopt a memorandum of understanding for the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees Mid-Management Unit. Word.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Acting Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is a two-year contract tentatively agreed to by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, the AFSMI Mid-Management Unit. This group is comprised of 17 budgeted positions, including recreation supervisors and coordinators, building inspectors, assistant and associate planners, civil engineering assistant and technician, public works inspector and supervisor, and the systems analyst and the senior systems analyst. The agreement before you recommends a 5% reduction in total compensation equating to approximately $108,000 of savings. Some of the highlights in this agreement are a 3% reduction in base salary, the elimination of the pay for performance bonus program, the elimination of the vacation payout in that caps the vacation at two years, the future employee sharing of any future medical premium increases, the freezing of dental and vision premiums, and retirement benefits, including the establishment of a third retirement tier, 2% at 55 with the highest third-year average salary. I'd like to extend my thank yous to the employees of the Mid-Management Bargaining Unit for working with the city to negotiate this contract. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions to council? Okay. Hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the adoption of resolution number 2010-dash.
100.
Resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos adopting the revised memorandum of understanding for the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, AFL-CIO Mid-Management Unit.
A second motion.
Okay. Motion, a second. Any discussion? Mr. Grocott?
Obviously, we, you know, discussed this item in closed session. I'm gonna go ahead and vote for it, but I just wanted to offer a sentiment, which I don't think I'm alone in, and that is, that especially relates to the retirement tier that we've set, 2% at 55. My feeling is that, you know, especially for management employees, that's still too low of an age. The general public, you know, if you're gonna retire from social security or most positions, you know, it's up there at 65 years, and this is down at 55. And I think in future years, we may want to especially look at that figure and be bumping that up.
Good. Okay. Any other thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to echo some of what Councilman Grocott said I've said before here, that I believe 55 was too early for non-safety personnel. But with that, I think something that needs to be said, and to echo what Ms. Mendenhall said, I would like to thank AFSMI and Mid-Management for coming to the table, as we have thanked all of our employees so far. Everyone has really pitched in to help us with this budget issue, and I don't think it's easy for people to come to a table knowing they're gonna walk away making less than they did before they got there. So, thank you, you know, from, as one council member says, and I'm sure other council members agree, this has been a hard time for our city, but all of our employees are pitching in, and through some creative ways with outsourcing and through givebacks like this, we are able to stay financially, I don't know what the proper word is, but financially sufficient city. So, thank you.
Great. So, with that, row call, please.
Councilmember Maude?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes. Okay. Item 11. I'm assuming that's what you're all here for, because you're all still here. We have a few fun things to do. We're gonna have the mayor make a few comments over the past year. We will be taking nominations for both mayor and vice mayor. There will be other comments from other council members and the new mayor, and we'll be adjoining to a reception in our lobby here. So, with that, as mayor, I guess, usually I talk last. I'll talk first in my last meeting as a mayor. What I did is I brought some tools from my workshop and around my house. I'm the type of guy, I mow my own lawn, I fix things. And I thought, when I thought about the past year and the things we've done, you know, there are certain tools you need to get things done. And so, I'll try to give kind of a little dialogue of our accomplishments, and these are accomplishments of the entire team. You learn on council. When you get on, within the first week, you're only one of five. To get anything done, you need to be four, four out of five or five out of five. It's really a job of working with the public, working with the team, working with council, working with staff, working with the employees. And it's really about recognizing opportunities and getting things done. And so, with that, let me pull out a few tools. And these I'm gonna leave for the new mayor. First, wire cutters. You'll notice that Mr. Klein just talked about it. We've been very successful because our employees have been very recognition, have had a lot of recognition of the economy and the situation that we're in, in actually reducing our salary cost, reducing our benefits cost, and our retirement. Salaries have come down. Some of the benefits have gone away. Employees are contributing more to some of their retirement, to some of their benefits. And the tiering, which is the retirement age, has gone up. Used to be 50, 55. As the discussion was made, it may continue more, but that's a piece. A real major accomplishment that we did during the year was with our park and rec maintenance. Our maintenance, we figured, was costing per annum $719,000. And if you add on, that, it was only salary benefits retirement. If you add on our corporate yard, facility costs, trucks, lawn mowers, and gasoline, you're talking about $900,000 in cost. Well, to show you what we did is about this. We saved about two-thirds. We now have Gachina Gardening doing it for $281,000. A tremendous accomplishment because what our goal was, wasn't just to cut cost. Our goal was to continue to provide quality service. And many of you, of course, most of you live in San Carlos. If you look at our parks now, if you just go right across the way in our city hall park, our parks, based on the three to four months of the contract that we've had, are just looking better than they ever have for one-third of the cost. So, very much of a success. We also, kind of, I'll do the clip test. We said no to red light. Our only red light is going away this year. And in the budget, some things came to us as what we called our path one expenses. Our path one, path two was doing park and rec mains, the police, fire, some big-ticket items, major changes in how we operate. Path one was making cuts everywhere. We looked at raising revenue. Parking meters came up. We said no. We also said no to discontinuing our Arts and Culture Commission, closing Crestview Park, and closing Highlands Park. We said no, no, and no. So, that's what we did with these, this set of tools. Next item, and I'll let Mr. Griselli hold this, because it's a small feat, but very important. A lot of these things take multi-years. Last year, when Mr. Griselli was mayor, and all of us actually who are here, we approved In-N-Out Burger. That will go in on our next mayor's term. In the springtime, In-N-Out Burger will be built at the intersection of Industrial and Holly. Also, next week, next month, something like this and other tools will be used for installing turf at Heather.
Highlands.
At Highlands. Thank you.
I'll go back.
Oh, we didn't change anything there. And so, we're very excited. That's gonna be a tremendous first-quality field. It really increases our opportunity for playtime for our children, for all our sports teams, and we're really excited. It is the, actually, second. Santa Clara has this material. We will be the second in the United States which will not use rubber pellets. We'll be using a coconut infill that is about 15 degrees cooler, very successful, very high-quality for our children to play with. Also, with a shovel, we have $3 million, a combination of grant money and redevelopment money that we're investing on our east side. If you think about where the depot is, on the east side, there are sidewalks we're making improvements to, bike lanes, landscaping, utilities underground. It's pretty torn and tattered on that part of the town, and we're making drastic improvements on that side of the depot, which will be better for everybody in San Carlos and especially the people who live there. We have a community that lives there. And last, which was going to be a kind of a special announcement, but it got out into the news in the last three or four days, one item that I'm very, very proud of is the announcement by Sutter Health to fund Palo Alto Medical Foundation in releasing capital money so that our hospital, Palo Alto Medical Foundation, will begin construction this next year. And we're really excited about that. We have first-class medical facilities in our Bay Area. We have Kaiser, we have Sequoia, we have Stanford, and now we'll have Palo Alto. It will be a phased approach. They will be building a parking lot, urgent care, medical offices, doctors' offices. So, they're building like that is what's gonna be called Phase One. The hospital itself will be later as Phase Two. But it's great news for economy, for the news, great news for San Carlos, great news for opportunity. When you need medical care, you will have a choice to zip down the street to a first-class organization. So, that is new news over this past week. So, with that, I'll put the shovel away. Yeah, Mr. Grocott also mentioned a very important part of that. Dr. Drucker, who was the CEO of Palo Alto Medical, he worked on this project for about six years. He passed away about three months ago, but before he passed away, he had heard from Sutter that they were going to be releasing funds. And I was actually with him and saw a tear in his eye. That's kind of why I have a little bit of tear in my eye, that his goal of building this hospital in San Carlos is happening. So, that's great, great news for him. Thank you, Mr. Grocott. It's a Japanese saw, very, very sharp. It's used to do all sorts of little cutoffs and so forth. One of it, one item is called a dovetail. You could do it with a saw like this. You could do it with a jig and a router. But what a dovetail does, you'll see them on drawers and fancy furniture, is you actually make cuts one way and the other way, and you make the opposite cuts on the other board. And when you put these two pieces together, I haven't used this much all year, but I will use it right now. You have this kind of a joint. And what I'm representing here is, we did a little cutting on one of our boards, starting about six months ago. It had to do with the police department in San Carlos. We knew we couldn't sustain cost. It was costing us $9 million a year. It was growing to a rate that was not, much higher than our revenues coming in. And we looked around at some options. We didn't even know what those options were going to be, but all of a sudden, there were other organizations that came in with proposals to help us in this situation. And I see Sheriff Monks is here someplace back there, is our elected official, the sheriff for the county of San Mateo, gave us a proposal that's actually saving us $2 million. But why I want to show this is, what I've seen in the last two months since the contract has started, is we have half San Carlos Police now, and we have half sheriffs. They're all sworn officers, but now they're working together as a team, as a real strong, what I call, joint to provide better services than we had, because we kept reducing and having to lay off our people. Overtime was getting crazy. Now, we have a much stronger organization with incredible resources from the sheriff. And the most important thing at the end of the day is we saved everybody's job. All of our officers and all of our employees for San Carlos Police Department have jobs right now. That was a very successful objective and feat for 2010. So, that's that. Next one's just a piece of paper. Whenever you make furniture, you kind of have to plan how big it's gonna be, how much wood you're gonna need, you know, and all the dimensions. And so, in the area of planning, it's something that we spend a lot of time doing on city council. Well, this team, over the years, has been working on a handful of items. One is the, in fact, we just talked about it in the agenda, on the rent back of the furniture store on San Carlos Avenue. We purchased that building a couple months ago. It's all part of a lot of planning that we're doing. It's called Wheeler Plaza, which is behind the old Foodville. We're looking at some redevelopment there of mixed-use residential, something that we're just starting, you know, the planning process on, but it's a great opportunity in the gateway of Laurel Street, which is our gem of the city of San Carlos. The Transit Village, which is a proposal, not approved at all. That includes 281 apartments down by the depot, both north and south of Holly. The environmental impact report was done on that. Staff had almost all the work to do on this next item. The 2030 General Plan and the Integrated Climate Action, which won the California State Award. Mr. Sevay's in the office. Mr. Seve's in the office there. Tremendous planning tool that staff did, council approved, which is basically our main planning tool on the direction, on how we use our land in the city. Zoning ordinance was part of that, also a real key. High-speed rail gets a lot of attention right now, not as much as in San Carlos. We already did a lot of work on that 15 years ago. We already have an elevated rail, but high-speed rail will change that, whether or not it goes up higher or down in the ground. But there are a lot of cities that are very vocal on high-speed rail, because they've done nothing to rail. They basically have cars cross those railroad tracks every day. There's no elevation, there's no tunnels anywhere in a lot of these cities that are worried about high-speed rail. And last would be the, we just started our, what I call, our branding and marketing. And that kind of gets into understanding who we are in San Carlos and consistency in our product line and how we sell it for companies that want to come and do business in town. So, that's the planning area. You want to hold this one? My honor. Notice these tools are used. They're not new tools. They're worn out. We have done a lot to be a green city. Just in the last year, I think it's been in the last year, we started food scraps. Of our 12-member agency, we were one of the early cities to basically recycle food scraps with our greenery's. And I was really excited to see council support a household hazardous waste pickup, which has been in existence now only about four months. And you could call anytime you want and pick up paint, insecticides, any of the scary things that sometimes gets thrown out or gets in the wrong location on planet Earth. At no cost, someone will come out and pick that up from your home. Mandatory recycling for the commercial base was started this year. With Recology, our new company, you've gotten a lot of flyers, you've gotten new bins, the black bin, the blue bin, and the green bin. That all formally starts January 1st, but it really is a single stream, much simpler way to recycle, where everything goes in one bin. It has wheels, you don't have to fool with those small bins anymore. And again, our whole goal is the diversion rate, to get more and more garbage to where we get to a point where we don't have garbage anymore. I know our family went from 32 gallons to 20 gallons. I think a lot of people in San Carlos, because of everything you recycle, at the end of the week, you look in your garbage can, there's not much left. And so, less garbage is very good. The Shoreway Facility, as you drive by 101 on the other side of the freeway, is a LEED certified energy building, first-class. That building actually services, again, 12 cities in San Mateo County. And we have a franchise fee and actually have our facility in San Carlos, but it does represent and take recycling and garbage for all those other cities. And the last thing we've done with the rake is the Green Building Ordinance Mandatory Tier One Energy Standards that we've implemented over the year. So, in green, we've done a lot. Have we done enough? No, there's more to do, definitely. But we're off to a great year of a lot of accomplishments in the green area. Ah, this is the one. Yeah. One of the real challenges coming up that we still need to do is with fire. And I thought, and I don't want to talk about fire, but I want to, I'm proud of this council on how they think and how they get things done. We all know, when you fight a fire, you use water. I won't spray it around much. But when you start looking around at options, you know, one of the other ways to fight fires, and I am going to light it, is with fire. And many times, you'll see the Forest Service will light back, what do they call them, trails? Well, they'll pre-light or light fires to basically stop the fire. And I think the example is well-taken. I think when we talk about fire, just like when we talked about landscaping for our parks and rec, when we talk about the police, I'm very proud of this team, kept an open mind, got the facts, looked at the consultant's reports, the staff reports, and they looked all the way from water to fire on how to solve it. And many times, the solution are a multitude of solutions in the middle. But that is the momentum that we have going as this team and the flexibility of our citizen base and so forth to be open to change. Not everything we do will be right. There'll be an error or two probably made, we'll look back. But I will always say, I'd rather do four things right and one thing wrong than not do anything. So, we're trying to make it five out of five, but we know we're people and we will make errors, but we're trying hard. And with that, I do have one last accomplishment. Do we have, can we have Carol Mazzetti and Norton Taborchi come up to our podium here? I don't think anybody knows you. And I've met you tonight, but I've known about you for a week. And we are very, very excited. Sometimes it's the little things that get the most excitement. And with that, our special guest, please welcome to San Carlos. We're excited about seeing the word Pete's on Laurel Street. Tell us what's going on.
Well, first of all, I'm Carol Mazzetti. I'm a real estate director for Pete's. And many of you may have seen me walking up and down Laurel Street for years now, hoping to find the perfect spot for a Pete's Coffee. And we are really excited to go into the building on Cherry and Laurel. That was the former Blockbuster. And this is Newman Terabishi. He's our construction director. He's in charge of, he's basically taking over. We've signed the lease now, and we're going to get ready to submit our, for our permits. So, at this point, we're thinking we'll probably be open in the spring or early summer. And it's going to be about 2,500 square feet, including the patio. It's going to have a beautiful patio. And we're just really excited to be here. We've been trying to get into San Carlos for a long time.
Great. Welcome to San Carlos. Thank you very, very much for coming tonight. So, in closing, I will say, it's been a thrill to be mayor this past year, great to work with staff, a lot of flexibility and with our employees. We created a lot of change for them, but they were flexible and strong enough to grow with change. We've kind of changed in the model on what city government is. We brought competition into it. But with that, I'll say there's, for me to stop talking, there is, as you, in the reception, there'll be a big tray of Sees candy. There's an article that the chamber did on a newsletter. They interviewed me, and I talked about, not so much what we did, but how we did it. And there's also a list of these accomplishments. That'll be out by the Sees candy, which is very near the Pete's Coffee that is out there, too. But with that, I will now like to call for nominations for new mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Councilmember Omar Ahmad be our next mayor.
I would like to nominate Mr. Griselli for mayor.
Mr. Mayor and fellow councilmembers and Mr. Grokot, I appreciate that you put my name in nomination, but I will withdraw my nomination and second Mr. Klein's nomination for Mr. Ahmad to be mayor for the next year.
Any other discussion? We have a first and a second. Anybody want to go get a cup of coffee first? Yeah, okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Okay.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
I do solemnly swear.
I, Omar Ahmad, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
So, help me, God.
So, help me, God. Inshallah.
Congratulations.
Got a lot of stuff here, guy. For all the CS majors in here, it's a nanosecond.
Wow.
Okay, six people got that joke. The chair will now entertain nominations for vice mayor. Mr. Griselli.
Mr. Mayor, I would nominate Andy Klein to be vice mayor for the next year.
I would like to second that.
I will again nominate Mr. Griselli for vice mayor.
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Grokot, again, I appreciate the effort there, but I will withdraw my name and, again, as I mentioned, make Mr. Klein my nominee.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Ahmad?
Yes.
Congratulations.
I don't think you have to move any farther, Randy. I think you're done. I think you're done, Randy. If you go to city clerk, we got trouble.
As mayor, I'm going to defer my comments for a few moments and ask for comments from the council members. Chair recognizes Mr. Grokot.
Thank you. So, tonight, as folks might realize, I broke with tradition. Traditionally, as people can tell, we typically take whoever is vice mayor, nominate and elect them mayor, as was done. And because that's the way it's done, it's actually, one might say, more important on who is nominated for vice mayor, because that typically, as I say, goes on the next year to become the mayor. And with vice mayor, there has been comments over the years that there is no tradition or there is a tradition. There's things that are looked at, things that are not looked at. For myself, this year, I looked at things differently, and I looked at them differently based on things that happened this past year with the mayor who just passed the gavel. And before I broke tradition tonight, some other traditions had been broken. For instance, when I first came on council, that was the only time I was given assignments. We have assignments as members of different committees or boards. In my freshman year, of course, Mayor Eaton pretty much said to me, "Mr. Grokot, we'd like you to take Airport Roundtable and Airport Land Use Committee and a couple of other things." And being a freshman, I just simply said, "Thank you very much," and I took on those duties, and I gladly did so. And I'm glad I did, because actually, on some of those, like Airport Roundtable, I met some great people, like John Long, who actually passed away while I was on the Airport Roundtable, sadly, and some other people who were just great, great folks to work with. But after my freshman year, what I saw from the council seemed to be a tradition that is if a council member chose to stay on a board or a committee, that was honored. This year, that tradition was broken, and the mayor took the, what's given to us by, given to the mayor by the council members, the role to make those choices. It was taken further than I'd ever seen it taken before, where two council members who were on a board and wanted to continue were taken off that board and replaced with two other members. I'd never seen that done before. And another thing that I saw differently this past year was during some of the discussion and comment period, or question, when council members are allowed to question staff on a staff report or make comment during discussion, there were at least two times, if not more, when I saw my opportunity to ask questions or make comments cut and the gavel brought down. And I'd never seen that done before. And what it showed to me is that it is important who we elect mayor and who's in these roles. There are things that, you know, you might say the tradition allegorically is that we give the mayor a sword to wear at his side, a sword that's in a sheath, just like you do a general in the army. And that sword is there for symbolic reasons, so that when the mayor gives state-of-the-city address, he's seen as the mayor, or when he does other things, functions in the community, he or she is seen as the mayor. And sometimes that sword, still in its sheath, is used to prod, like during council meetings. The role of the mayor, really, during a council meeting is a traffic cop, because discussion goes on, and sometimes discussion, especially when there's debate, might get a little hairy and a little out of control, and the mayor needs to step in and quiet things down. That's why, you might notice, we always say, "Through the chair." And what that means is, "May I have your attention, Chairman? May I have your attention, Mr. Mayor?" So that I can make a comment, so that they can acknowledge that and allow you to speak, so that we're not talking on top of each other. But again, I've never seen that sword unsheathed and used to cut off a discussion. And actually, if a discussion, if a council wants to end discussion, somebody on the council can simply say, "I call for the question." And what that means, in Robert's Rules, is, "We don't want to hear any more discussion, and what it takes to cut off discussion is a four-fifths vote on this dais to cut off discussion." That's the procedure that should be used. That's not the procedure that was used, and I carry that with me. I've been on this council for 10 years, and that hurt me deeply to be cut off two times. And that's why, tonight, I know it may not be pretty, I know these comments may not be that positive to folks, but I really felt the need to make these comments. And the reason I nominated Mr. Griselli for vice mayor, for mayor and vice mayor, is because he's the one person on this dais who I've seen operate as mayor before, done it in a very fair fashion. There were times when Mr. Griselli was the mayor, and he and I disagreed on issues. He and I disagreed, for instance, on the turf issue. The only council member that I agreed with on the turf issue when he was a council member here in the audience tonight was Tom Davids. But despite my feelings or my position on it, when Mr. Griselli was mayor, he always allowed me to ask questions of the staff, he always allowed me to make my points and carry on the discussion as I saw fit. There were times where he may have interrupted and said, "Where are you going with this? Or you can end this soon," or, you know, whatever, but not a complete cutoff. And so, because I know Mr. Griselli and I can trust him, I can trust him for his life. And so, because I know Mr. Grisilli and I can trust him, I can trust him for his leadership, that's why tonight I nominated him both times, and that's why I voted the way I did. Thank you.
Mr. Grisilli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always an interesting phenomenon, this is my fifth year on council, when we have the changeover. And I remember, when I became the mayor, I wasn't quite sure what I was supposed to be doing, and of course, you're always reminded by your fellow council people when you're not sure, or they'll tell you what they would like you to be doing. But a couple of comments on the outgoing mayor, Mr. Royce. I've met a lot of people in my life, because I am the oldest person on this dais, and I'll tell you what, there's not one more positive than Randy Royce. What he brings is an amazing amount of optimism to his job as the mayor or as a council member, as well as to his own personal life. And I will never forget this year owing to that experience. If we all would have his optimism, I think government would run a lot better and a lot smoother. So I want to congratulate him on his year. He had a lot was accomplished, more to be done, but again, I just want to compliment him on his past service. For Mr. Ahmad and Mr. Klein, I welcome them to the leadership positions that they're going to assume. Again, when you get into this position, it can be somewhat daunting, but we're all here to assist you and to make it work. We are, as Mr. Royce said earlier, we all have to work together. We are not always going to vote 5-0, trust me. And not all of us are going to vote every week together with the other person. We have five different members up here with five different viewpoints, and I respect each of them. I may not agree with each of them certain times, but I respect each one of them. And I wish them the best of luck. I'm sure they'll do a fine job in leading our city in a very, very difficult time in the year 2011, and we have a number of challenges yet to face us, and I'm sure there'll be some new ones propping up. So again, congratulations and look forward to working with you in 2011.
Thank you, Mr. Grisilli. Mr. Royce, get your back cleanup.
Okay. So, yeah, to our new mayor. It's an interesting situation where you run against someone for council. There were four of us who ran for two seats. Omar and I were in a boxing ring for two months when we ran against each other. And then, when the two of us got elected, all of a sudden, you're part of the same team. And it was actually fun doing both with him. So he's good in the ring, he's good on council. I'm very excited. His enthusiasm, he's so bright, and he's so much fun. You know, we all have our jobs, but you've got to make part of your job fun, and we're going to have fun, and we're going to continue to do things with the leadership that he brings. And our new vice mayor, I told this once to his face, it was, I've never seen anybody so young, so prepared, and so knowing of San Carlos. I mean, his first meeting, he was so good, and he's getting better with every meeting. So we in San Carlos should be very, very excited to have talent like Mr. Klein on our city council. Welcome.
Vice Mayor Klein.
That's going to take some getting to use too. So I've only been on the council for a year, and it's been quite, quite a year, to say the least. It's been bittersweet in many ways, being able to sit up here in a leadership position with these great men to my left and my right, and our great city clerk, and doing what we've done. While it hasn't been fun, a lot of the times, it's been what's needed to be done, and I think the citizens see that, and I think they respect that. And I have such a great deal of respect for the people I sit up here with, and I'm going to talk a little bit first about our outgoing mayor, Mayor Royce. I'm about the same age as Mayor Royce's children, so that's a weird feeling to have up here, knowing that we're up here as equals, yet there's a lot of time in between us. And I have nothing but the utmost respect for the job you've done as mayor, but even more than that, nothing for the utmost respect for you as a person. You have given so much to this city that is truly an honor to be able to sit up here with men like you and lead this city through an incredibly hard time. The dedication you've shown to this committee for stuff that people don't even see. You know, the commissions you sat on before, the volunteer work you've done, has all led you to have this ability to understand the situation that we're going through, and as Councilman Grisilli pointed out, to always be positive. It's annoying sometimes how positive you are, but it's true. We ran on a measure together that we lost, and I swear, after that loss, five minutes later, Randy smiling, and it took me months to get over that. But it's great to see that, to see that forward energy, always pushing for a solution as opposed to being mired in the problem, and that is truly something that's admirable, and I'm so proud to sit up here with you that, while this has only been my first year, I'm sure this is going to be the year that I remember the most. And so, thank you very much. And now to Mayor Ahmad.
That's going to take some getting to use too.
Yeah, that's another interesting one. Omar and I have spent a great deal of time together this last year, countless hours. We were together on the fireboard, and we have had more coffee or more meetings in our city manager, now our interim city manager's office, than I can even count. And it's been great to getting to know you, not just as a council member, but as a person. You're incredibly quirky. And anyone who knows Omar knows what I'm talking about. You know more about tech than I'll ever, ever know in my entire lifetime. You say things, "I'm 28, I'm supposed to be the guy who knows this stuff," and when you're talking tech, I have no idea what you're talking about. But you are incredibly knowledgeable, you have a very analytical mind, and it's really showing up here. You have an ability to handle some of these broad-scale pictures that I think, it's a gift. I definitely don't have the ability to crunch down in numbers the way you do, and it's great, because it really balances out our council. Your ability to handle the science and the math of a lot of the things that we do has been a really great, great skill set to have up here, and I think it's really pushed us forward in this last year. I look forward to working with you continually. As I told, I think, a reporter on Friday, "This is your year." So I'll be in the background, though. For every picture, I'll be right there over your shoulder. But this is your year, and any help you need, anything you need me to do, you know, I serve at the pleasure of the mayor. So I'm excited for this year. I believe we will get the job done this year, and it's going to be great having you helm the ship for this final year, hopefully, of this budget crisis that we're in. So I'm proud to serve up here with you, and I'm looking forward to 2011.
Thank you. I think the first thing Randy did for me was, he gave me a dry cleaning order. So. Get ready. Wow. Jen Blasberg. Shalom. Father Dave. Peace be with you. Imam Abubakar Rahman. And to a lot of other folks here. Salaam alaikum. First, thank you to the council for the vote. I appreciate your confidence in me, and going to work my tail off to make certain that we get this work done. Randy, I don't think people have gotten yet. Leadership on this position really starts with heart, and there is one person on this dais who has more heart in leading this city, and that's Randy. He has absolutely put everything into this job, and he absolutely leads with his heart. You saw the accomplishments, you've heard what's happened. It has been awesome to watch you, and I thank you for everything that you've done and for what San Carlos, we owe you a debt. So thank you. I've had the opportunity to work with two other fairly impressive mayors. Bob Grisilli. Thank you. You started a tremendous journey and had a lot of hard times coming in here and led a very steady ship. Brad Lewis isn't here tonight, but it was amazing, being a new council member, watching a guy simultaneously win an Oscar. Dirtbag. And still do just such an amazing job with the city. I see former Mayor Davids, Mayor Eaton, if there's others here, I can't see, because I just took off my glasses, but thank you for your leadership and your contributions and for the ability for us to bring San Carlos into the future. I was just thinking about this a little while ago, that I took the oath, and I wanted to do that very intentionally, but I realized that actually makes, every member of my family has taken that oath. My parents did it on the bicentennial when they became citizens, and my sisters have taken a similar oath when they took the bar, and I've taken that now that I've entered public service. I think it's an interesting point to recognize, you know, my parents are immigrants, and this is an interesting story of how immigrants become Americans. The fact is, we all came in on different ships, but we're in the same boat now. So how do you become an American? One of the things you have to do is you have to be in public service. Gandhi put a wonderful statement together. Why you're in public service is obviously, the best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of others. If you want to look at Mayor Royce and Vice Mayor Klein, Mr. Grisilli and Mr. Grocott, they have all really put themselves on the line to make certain that they could provide that service. I got questions when I was running, you know, from the tech community. It's like, "Are you nuts? What are you doing in local politics?" And then, everybody who's in local politics is like, "What are you doing? You're nuts doing this." I had a couple of thoughts. I've been privileged to serve on the Samtrans and the Caltrain Board. I'll just pull out one number. Caltrain provides rides for approximately 12 million people a year. Kind of think about that. People are depending on this service to get to school, get to work, get where they need to go, and then come home safely. That's an amazing bit of work. Everybody on this board serves on commissions and councils, and we work to keep our bay clean and our air clean. Thanksgiving, I've got to admit, I was a little bit homeless, and so I rode with our police force. People were inside, and you could smell the turkeys burning. That was in, well, whatever. People were worried about, you know, where could they find their cranberry sauce? What was the recipe for so-and-so? How could they go about the things about celebrating? And it was amazing riding with the police, doing an extraordinary job to make certain that that day was about the very important thing of Thanksgiving. Everything else shouldn't have entered your mind. What are we doing on this dais? And it's really to make those things routine, expected, and ordinary. Here's what I've learned. If you want to make those things routine, expected, and ordinary, it takes an extraordinary effort from an extraordinary staff. Let me take a couple of minutes to thank a few of them. Jeff Malpe and Brian Mora have been tremendous leaders. Thank you for your counsel. I appreciate it. Greg Rubens, you've been a rock behind us. I appreciate you keeping me out of jail. I love that. Christine Boland is somebody who's up here, doesn't say a lot. She'll occasionally spit out a number when we do a resolution, and it just does not describe the quality of work, how hard she works, and the fact that City Hall actually runs because Christine is here. There are a few others I need to point out. Ms. Mendenhall, Director Long, Director Wile, Al Savay. These are the leaders of our City Hall who do tremendous work. You don't get to see them in the papers, you don't hear it too often, but I got to tell you, when we go out of town from the council and we meet with other city council members, and they say, "Hey, I met so-and-so. Man, that guy is sharp." We have an amazing staff, and we should be incredibly proud of them. I want to take a special moment to thank our police chief, Greg Rothus. We talked about leadership, we talked about what it takes for heart. Greg Rothus displayed something amazing. In one of the most turbulent years that you could head up a department and a police force, Greg Rothus lived the motto that he put on the San Carlos Police Force. People, pride, and professionalism. We are so blessed to have a professional like Greg Rothus stay with us, join the sheriff's office, thank you, Sheriff, and serve our city. And I thank you, Greg. Finally, I do want to acknowledge all the members of our safety services. They're working day in and day out. Dial 911, guess what, they're there. They do a tremendous job, and I want to salute them. It is a bit in vogue nowadays to bash unions, to say that they're not doing enough, that the problems of the state are their problems. Let me make certain that we understand one key point. We work with our labor groups. They have approached us cooperatively and pragmatically. Over this last year, they are taking less in their paycheck and less in their benefits than they started this year. We did that cooperatively. It's been tough negotiations, but they're working with us. And for the rank-and-file workers who work here in San Carlos providing this service, thank you so much. We start to look forward, progress is a nice word, that's what we're trying to do. Change is its motivator, and change has its enemies. There will always be vocal groups who are against everything all the time. They will tend to argue that change is too fast, there is too much risk, you can't do that. I'm sorry. Even if you're on the right track, you'll get run over if you sit there. So we are going to move forward. If nothing else, time moves forward and it demands we do the same. People have been asking me, geez, okay, so you're going to be sitting in the center seat, it's the big one, you get the hammer thing, what do you want to do? And my focus is going to be primarily on three things. The first is not a surprise, it's around budget and fiscal sustainability. The issue around fire and how we provide public safety is going to be first and foremost. The second is around strategic development. How do we move forward as a city? There are strategic questions that we need to really ask and figure out where we want to move forward. Lastly, we are going to be talking about economic development. I really hope that we're able to reach out to the investment communities, talking about what kind of companies we want to come to San Carlos. This has been an amazing birthplace of companies, and we can do that some more. For the members on the dais, what I want to say is I will be bringing two initiatives forward. The first, we have some tremendous people in San Carlos who do amazing things, and I want to make certain that they are recognized. I will be bringing forward for discussion and hopefully action, the striking of a mayor's coin that would be used to recognize meritorious actions for people in San Carlos. The second thing I will be bringing to you for discussion and potential action is an adoption of something known as the Charter for Compassion and making San Carlos a compassionate city. With the help of the Peninsula Clergy Network and a number of the interfaith community, it is time that San Carlos also realizes that we can take a leadership role in a number of ways. One of them is how do we treat people, and what do we stand for as a city? Part of it has to be that we are going to have compassion at our core. You know, politically, these are not fun times, but we got to try. Martin Luther King said something which was, "Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. In the end, we remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." Well, San Carlos is going to stand up and talk. Finally, I do want to talk about citizenship, because it means quite a bit in my family. When the kids turned 18, it was the mandatory trip to the voter registration office to get the voter card, and it was just the coolest thing. Now you count. Since the days of Greece and Rome, the word "citizen" was a title of honor, and we've seen more emphasis put on the rights of citizenship than on its responsibility. And today, as never before in a free world, responsibility is the greatest right of citizenship and service is the greatest of freedoms' privileges. What has been a hallmark of San Carlos is folks understand their responsibility, and stepping up as citizens has never been a problem for these folks. I am proud to be in front here today and lead you for the next year. I do want to acknowledge one more group. It's a group that I like to refer to as our season ticket holders. Our season ticket holders are those who are always here. They watch, they comment, they examine our agendas, and they let their feelings be known. I think we talk about that which is sacred in the United States, and to me, that that which is sacred in the United States, and to me, that podium where public comment is made is truly sacred. I may not agree with our season ticket holders, but God bless them. I love the fact that they are here, that they take part, and that they really care about what they care about. So I welcome you, I look forward to your comments. We probably won't agree many times, but God bless you. Finally, I want to leave this with the most important people here, it's the citizens of San Carlos. I'm going to do everything I can to keep your trust, I'm going to do my best, I'm going to ask for your prayers and your support. We've got a hard year ahead, and I will need everybody's help, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you. We are going to adjourn outside. We've got some nifty refreshments put together by our good friend, Randy Royce, and his especially, she who must be obeyed, Yvette. We love Yvette, thank you, Yvette. If she says jump, I just don't even ask how high, I just go. On behalf of the city council, for everybody, I really want to wish you this. Happy holidays. Please be safe, please enjoy our city, go walk down Laurel Street, love those lights. We're going to do everything we can for you, and please have a happy holiday. I have one final personal note. We're going to adjourn tonight in the memory of somebody. A few weeks ago, we lost a real pioneer, of somebody who was in the interfaith community, and we consider sort of a rock. Razia Kreshid Inamdar passed away, and it was a big hole. Tonight, I asked for an interfaith swearing-in, and one of the giants of our community has passed. So it's in her memory that we will adjourn tonight. And with that, for 2010, the city council stands adjourned.